Call to order the regular meeting of June 10th, 2024 at 6:02 PM. If you please stand and Commissioner Morris will give the indication.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly father, we thank you for the many blessings you've given us and for your grace. We ask that you would give us strength, guidance, and wisdom as we go through and conduct the county's business today. Please be with those who need healing. These things we ask in your most gracious name. Amen.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get an approval of tonight's agenda?
Remoted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is public comments. Savarsky, will you please come up?
My name is Sri Ananda Sarasri. I live at 1060 Tyler Road in Walaco, North Carolina. Want to talk about health? Dr. Francis Boyle, Harvard educated international law professor, who drafted the Biological Weapons and Anti-Terrorism Act unanimously passed by Congress, provided an affidavit to a court in Florida stating that the COVID-19 mRNA nanoparticle vaccine injections violate the law. And he asserted that they are biological weapons and weapons of mass destruction. In his career, he has advised numerous international bodies in the areas of human rights, war crimes, genocide, and bio-warfare. I recommend that the county immediately seize all remaining vaccine vials in the county and proceed with legal action against the perpetrators who created and distributed these vaccine bioweapons. I also recommend that this body reconsider keeping an allopathic hospital in the area. Instead, I recommend converting it into a natural holistic healing center staffed with osteopathic physicians, midwives, naturopathic doctors, chiropractors, and specialists in Ayurveda and TCM medicines. It has come to my attention that Western allopathic medical system is now the leading cause of death in the United States with the pharmaceutical industry leading the charge. There are so many other ways to heal, and we should offer the best to the people of Stokes County. Thank you.
Glenn Cox.
Good evening, everyone.
Glenn, how you doing?
I'm doing good, thank you. Good to see you. Good to be seen. Good to see everybody. Happy to be here. I have to, my wife asked to pass these out. Commissioner Morris, I'm here because of you.
You are.
Yes, sir. You had, and I got this flyer, you had this as your plan for your second term. And number one on the list was to lower the property tax rate. Over the past several days, I've listened to you guys talking about budget amendments and the whole bit, and doesn't sound like we're going to lower the property tax rate to me. Sounds like they're going up. And that was your, that was your plan for your second term. I think others felt that way as well. So when I started looking at that, I said, well, wait a minute. What is in this budget? And so I actually, I've got several 40 years of experience doing this kind of stuff. And so I started going down through it, and I said, well, you know, it's like a hodgepodge of stuff. I'd like to see one page, and this was what this handout is, I'd like to see one page on the county's website that tells us what the current balance is that the county actually has, how much money we actually have, and that we're dealing with, the amount that any entity expects our county to have available to them, to us in the event that we want to take out loans or whatever. Because I want to know where we're standing as a county as far as financial goes. And I'm sorry, but I also have down here a list of what these lineums are. You guys have all these weird line items on your budget numbers. I'm sorry, Amber. I can never have figured those out. But anyway, so what's the listing of what those are? The current loans the county currently has, the current trajectory of wars as to what you're going to do with those for additional loans, what the current tax rate for the citizen of Stokes is, broken down. So it says right there, tax rate is 60 some cents. It's this for this, this for that, and so forth. Make it easy for people to understand, okay? That's really all I'm asking. Any questions for me?
We really can't ask during this for you to talk. We can address it when we do our comments.
You're right. That's it. I'm done. It's great to see everybody. It's great to be seen and not viewed. And I'm happy to be here, happy to be alive, and I am going to be a lot better the next time I come see you. Thank you.
Appreciate you, Glenn. Thanks, man. Adam Riddge.
Good evening, board. My name is Adam Riddge. I live at 1089 Berry Farm Road in Madison. I've been a full-time resident of Stokes County for 39 years. And even though throughout my adulthood, I've traveled and stayed in many places in North Carolina, I've always been proud to call Stokes County home. This is especially true when I firmly planted my roots back here in Stokes County over almost nine years ago, when I married my beautiful wife, and then we began a family where we have called home for its entire life. I pride myself in staying involved and aware of what's going on in the county that I love. I come to you this evening with concerns of the fiscal year 2024-2025 recommended budget. I will start by saying I truly understand that you all have difficult jobs making decisions that will ultimately affect every citizen in Stokes County. As I've watched the presentations of the 2024-2025 recommended budget, each budget work and each budget workshop that has been presented so far, it appears the school system is being unfairly treated compared to other departments. As I've watched each department head come in front of you, all they have been very pleased with the recommended budget and even made comments of how additional items were even added beyond their request. Look, I'm not here to say that those, those things are not important and that I don't agree with them. But with the essential services that the county provides, but I do not agree that it should come from the backs of the children and staff of the school system because more than likely, one day, the children in the school system will fill the roles of the essential services that the county provides. I'll be willing to wager that most of the county employees and school system employees have attended Stokes County schools before entering each of their professions. I feel certain the three of you have also graduated from the school system and have family that is still involved in some capacity. Per pupil funding will just not work at this time in our county with our age facilities and different needs for each student with our diverse population that we have here in our county. If this was even possible, what standards would you use to provide such a number to provide funding per pupil? It appears that more strategic planning needs to be put into place before providing such a number before per pupil funding is, it can happen. It's not easy just, just to use last year's numbers and multiply that by the ADM. As you all have seen with our county's aging infrastructure, staffing troubles, federal and state mandates, along with inflation costs, is on the rise. So a blanket approach of a per pupil funding is just not advisable. Some students may be leaving the school system to join charter programs, and money must be paid for those students. But those numbers are not accounted for in the system's ADM. So who is left to pick up the tab on that if funding becomes per pupil? Other considerations to the, to the comparisons to the other counties that was provided, do they provide SROs to each school, as Stokes County does, to ensure the safety of our students and staff? Are the facilities newly built or recently renovated keeping operation costs down? Stokes County school staff are not on the high end of the pay scale compared to the bordering counties and states. I realize locally, the county, we are only responsible for facilities and operations. And it was said that funding should decrease as students decrease. But I also heard while listening to the budget meetings about inflation and salaries for the county employees. That also affects the school, the school system employees as well. And right now, part of that must come from local funding to make it work out. But if not, cuts will have to be made to the education of the children of our community that will adversely affect the education of future emergency service personnel, essential employees, and teachers for years to come. I believe that it also stated that transportation costs will come down with consolidation. I cannot see that to be true because my family lives in Pine Hall, in the Pine Hall School District. While attending Pine Hall, my daughter's ride was 3.9 miles at six minutes, at six minutes. Now, the new district in Warren Cove Elementary is 10 miles at 15 minutes. I realize this is the only one example, but my point is it appears that the best that we can hope for is to try to break even on transportation. I hear a lot of grumbling about having to pay so much tax for school systems when they, when they don't have a child involved. And I realize that we have an aging population here in the county. But I don't feel, I don't believe I'll be wrong by saying that many of the folks that live in Stokes County attended a public school somewhere. And when that, when they did, taxes paid for those folks to attend schools. So I have really a hard time accepting folks make comments about something that they're not receiving because more than likely, somebody paid the tax for them. Some of it, I'm gonna close in real quick. But some of the things to think about before not properly funding schools, how's Stokes County retain and attract young adults? Why does it seem like economic development has been shelved? I'm a big proponent because I think we can grow in this county. I have a lot of faith in our county. And how do we capitalize on county funding beyond property tax, possibly a 25, 25 cent of a sales tax? And possible a joint rider between the county and the school system because I think that's essential to get grants because this county needs grants to be able to be successful. I'm in hopes that during this budget process, expenses will be amended between the both boards and decisions are made that you keep our Lord Jesus in mind and allow him to guide you in your process. May God bless you all.
Thank you. This closes the floor for public comments at 6:15 PM. This time, we'll go to the managers' commissioners' comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Cox first.
Okay.
You weren't ready, were you?
I wasn't ready.
You want me to start the other way?
Yeah, it's fine. I don't have many comments.
I hate you be last on the time.
It's fine. I don't have many. I just want to thank you all for coming out and for being here and taking a part of this meeting and sharing your thoughts with us, especially here at budget time, when we've got a lot of decisions to make. I agree with what Adam said. I think that we can grow this county, and economic development is very important to us. And it's something we've got to really prioritize to make this county as great as it, as it has the potential of being. So that being said, I think, you know, being 15 years of service on the school board, I always have a soft spot for school system and, and their needs and look forward to hopefully sitting down next week and meeting with the school system to iron out some things and talk to them about funding for sure. So that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Sure would.
Thanks, everybody, for coming, those viewing the end. Congratulations to all the graduates across the county and the state. I attended Francis Coe's Kick Off the Park meeting Saturday, and my hats off to the Francis Coe area. There were 20 to 25 people there, and they're really pumped to get their part. So thanks again for coming, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, I'd like to welcome everybody for participating with us today, whether you're here or online. It's one of the most important things for local government that help us do the right thing is to have participation and feedback from the, from the public on what we're doing. The, I wrote a note down before the two guys spoke that said, one of the things I was going to say during my comments was, we're working on the budget. Please let us know if you have any input. So I appreciate you guys coming and talking on that tonight, and, and hopefully other folks that, that are looking at it and will, you know, you can provide that, that feedback to us directly or by phone or emails or whatever, as well as coming to the meetings. Because on the 17th, we're going, we're going to have to kind of lock this thing down, 17th, 18th of this month, and get something approved. Glenn was correct about my comments on tax decreases. My campaign position has always been property tax increases are a last resort. But I never take them completely off the table by saying that because sometimes we have to make hard choices about services we're going to provide or not provide. So it's always the objective to keep all our taxes as low as possible. Also sensitive to the school funding and, and we're in a complex kind of situation with, it'd really be nice if they'd given us a consolidation plan, something to work with, it'd make it a lot easier to, to figure out how to fund the school system. It doesn't look like we're going to get that, so I guess we're going to have to work around it. But I'm very sensitive to trying to make sure that we adequately fund the school system as well. That's all I have.
Mr. Mendenhall?
Just want to thank everybody for being here tonight. It's nice to look out here and see all of you here and know everybody that's here. That sure is nice. Call everybody out by the first name. And for anybody that's watching live stream, thank you for participating also. To Glenn and Adam, thank you for your comments, to both of you. I've known Adam since he was probably four or five years old. I believe he came to my baseball camp a year or two. And this is probably, well, I won't say probably, it probably, it is the toughest item, in my opinion, to work on each year. This is my budget that I've worked on, and the budget process is a very difficult one, but it's very important. And our citizens are at our very best trying to put forth a final product that will make our county progress and continue to make Stokes County a great place to live. This is greatest county. Went to see my granddaughter graduating Wilmington. I have six beaches there in Wilmington, and I want to take all five beaches for where I live at here in Stokes County. I love Stokes County. All those people going out there swimming. I didn't see any sharks, but for some reason, Wilmington seems to draw a lot of people. I don't want to say it's more power to them, but they can have it. I just want my country aside on Flat Shoals Road, and that's where I like to be. And Mr. Chairman, that's about all I got to say.
Thank you. I'll make a comment, Amber, and I'll go last.
Yeah, I'll just say, welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here. I'll just keep it short. We've had three meetings today. I've got a headache. But thank you for being here.
We didn't give you a headache. Good evening, everybody, and it's good to see, good to see people here. And I know personally, I appreciate people coming up here and giving their perspective because that's, that's what it's about. And I think with local government, I think that's the best arena to where the people can actually connect to, to the people that they elect. They see them every day at the grocery store, the ball fields, and they can come and talk freely on our Board of Commissioners meetings. And I think that's important. Just to address a couple of things, I mean, no one, no one likes to raise taxes. I don't think anybody up here, sitting up here is independently wealthy. And I don't like paying more taxes than I have to. But I know that I like having services. If I have to call 911, I, I want someone to answer the phone that's trained, and I want them to get the appropriate, whatever it is, fire, police, sheriff, whatever, out to my place to help me and my family. Glenn, and, you know, when you were talking about, I know you just mentioned Commissioner Morris about, you know, running on lowering the tax rate. I mentioned that in mine, too. I wanted to have a low tax rate, but also liked transparency. And so instead of keeping the tax rate the same and saying that we didn't raise the tax rate, but it was a reevaluation period, but we just let the reevaluation stand as it was, when I got my tax bill, three months later, I paid more taxes. So that, to me, that's a tax increase, even though the tax rate stayed the same. And that's why I'm adamant, is if I feel like we have to raise taxes, I'm going to tell you, we got to raise taxes. And of all people, Glenn, you should know, I mean, you and I kind of came in the same time in the Stokes County government. I mean, I knew you were with the state, and I was with Fable for a long time, and you were with the state a long time. But when we both kind of come in at the same time, there were things that I didn't understand that were not properly being funded here, and I think you would agree with that. Because you and I had a lot of conversations when I'd come down here, and we really, really had an opportunity with you, and you were enthusiastic, and you were really gonna, really gonna do a lot of great things. And you did do great things. But unfortunately, we can't help, you know, what the Lord plans for all of us. So I guess what I'm trying to say in a nutshell is sometimes, and I'm being honest about this, sometimes you run on something, but then when you get in the position to where you're put to where you get to see things, and you, it, it hits you different. I mean, you got to be honest. You can't say, well, I said, I'm going to lower the tax rate. I mean, we spent money in your, in your direction, a lot of money. And we spent a lot of money last, in this current budget, propping up animal control and a few other departments. So I don't, I don't, I don't want you to think or Adam to think that, you know, I run on something that I was just trying to run to get elected because this isn't my, this isn't fun to me. I mean, this is a job. I enjoy helping people. But I'm not trying to trick people to get me here because I'm gonna say, hey, I'm gonna lower taxes. Eventually, I'd like to, because if we can get business development in here and economic development, and we got some great things that are coming down the road, but they're not here yet. But I want to make sure that our government is efficient. But at the same time, we got to provide services. And to your point, Glenn, too, you're right. It does get kind of, a lot of people, when you look at the budget, you know, you see, you know, you're seeing control numbers and blah, 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 blah. It, I mean, it, I get it. But have you looked, have you looked at the, at the managers, the summary? And if you just go read that, just read the summary. Now, don't, don't look at the, you don't have to go to control numbers. It's the part. She breaks it down and explains it very well why she's recommending, what she's recommending. And along with that, she puts statistics in there that backs it up. But, and I'll just give you a quick overview. So we're getting a lot of growth in, in the western part, in some in the south part of Stokes County. Well, the calls for service for EMS, calls for service for the sheriff's office, they going up. The, the rescue calls for fire, they going up. I mean, that's just, that's a fact. And so it's, it's, and she does a very good job in the narrative of explaining why we're doing what we're doing. And I get it. What is it, maybe 15, 16 pages, Amber? I don't know, maybe a little bit more than that. And I know, but it's, it's easy to read. And so if you want to know why we're, I mean, I guess we can, I don't know how we can condense it and you, and you lose what we're trying to do because she just lays it all out. And then if we can't afford to do it, then, you know, then we just have to pick whatever we're, we're going to do without. And, and, you know, we just, we go down the road. But if there's, if there is a better way, that we can do snapshots or something to where, you know, people find it easier to read and to follow along, I mean, I'd be, I'd be more than willing to, you know, to try to do it. Because honestly, I wish more people would, would pay attention and come and ask questions about the budget. Some people will complain, but, but it'll be after the budget's passed. And then, you know, and then they don't even want, they don't even want to understand. It's a hard decision, and I, I hate that we're in this point, but we have not invested in our infrastructure and in our human capital in this county for a long, long time, including professional development. A long, long time that has not been done. And I think the school budget, I think it is a priority. It is something that, that, you know, you're right, Adam, with the, it's, the kids are our future. And I, and I want, and I want to invest in that. But I also want the same thing that I want from the county departments because they're doing reports now. And you can get that online, too. You can follow every, an annual report now that is done, and then plus every three months quarterly, a report is done. You can look up any department and see what they're doing. If their numbers are up, their numbers are down, you can see right, right for yourself. But I also think that the school system is, because we spent, we give a lot of money to the school system. Up until, I know we're changing, we're changing the formula back to the way it was several, several years ago. Because at some point in time, at a different, different administration, we decided to give half, just right, half off the bat, right off the top of the county budget. And then we've just got to, then we get 30 or 32 cents to operate our general fund and run everything else. Most counties do it the way we used to do it, which is the per student thing. Now, whether or not, you know, we stick strict right to that, I mean, that's, that's for us. When we meet, I guess we just needed to talk to the superintendent and, you know, and get a feel. But we give a lot of money for the school district to hire teachers. And because of the low enrollment rate, because the state will only give so much money for the students and things. But when the years pass, we've given a lot of money. And the school system employees, even the ones that we're providing with the local funds, they're on the pay, state, we pay the state rate, and then they get the state raises when the state raises are given. But as I look out and I look to my, the employees that have worked here all these number of years, there are all those years where they don't get any raises because we can't afford to give the school everything they want. And so what we do, it's, it's been easier, I guess, all these years. Instead of raising the tax rate or finding out how we can think things more efficient or cooperate, what we do is, is we just take the easy way out and say, there's no money. And I, and I think that's wrong on both ends. So I want to, I want to do what's right for the school system. But I also want the statistics that show that what we're doing, what's working, that's great. But I haven't seen this year's, I don't know when the grade report comes out, Commissioner Mendenhall. Do you know? Like for the, you know, like the A, B, C, the school.
The scores that the government's.
And they get a A grade, B grade, C grade. I don't know when that comes out. But, okay. So the school year that just concluded, the year before, I saw their, their grades, and it wasn't, wasn't that good. I think there was one A out of all, all 19 schools. If I remember right, it was either two or three Ds and one. If I remember right, it was either two or three Ds and one F. So the, the money is not, the money comes from, from the local tax dollars that we're pumping in. And so, I would, and I've never, I've only, this is on my second budget, I've only been on the board going on two years. But I don't remember, I don't remember the school, when we did our budget session earlier this year for this budget year, I don't, I don't remember any comments like what they're, what they were gonna do to make that better. And I think one of those schools is in your area, Adam, that was low. So, yeah. So with that being said, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments, and, and I know I'll do the best I can to be, to be fair to everybody, but I demand accountability from the Stokes County employees, and I'd like to see some accountability from the school system, too. All right, at this time, we'll go on to the next item, and I gotta read a conflict of interest statement. Before moving further, does any board member have a conflict with any of the items on the agenda for tonight, or one that could be perceived as a conflict of interest? Nope. All right. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next up is discussion agenda. We have Fire Marshal Scott Aaron will come up and talk about mapping for a fire district change.
Thank you. Back the end of last budget process, the fire commission came before you and was requesting to do away with the Pilot Knob Fire Department area that they covered inside of Stokes County. We've worked with mapping since then to make sure that all of the houses that were in that area would be covered by a fire department. It all falls within the Five Mile Insurance District of Double Creek. We did meet with Pilot Rescue, and they're gonna continue to cover that area with rescue and medical coverage. We've talked with the fire chief at Double Creek, and they are prepared to consume this, this area that Pilot Knob Fire Department had once covered. The mapping stuff was in your packets. We have to submit that to the state for approval. That was the reason we was trying to get it on for tonight, and hopefully to possibly get it passed through tonight on the, in the meeting.
Questions for Scott?
So Scott, Five Mile range, um, we're talking about, it has complete coverage.
Yes, sir.
Have any questions?
Was any, any of this used to be in Pinnacle here?
No, no, sir. This, this area at Pilot Knob was, was given was prior to Double Creek being built. And then, once it was built, it was just kinda left that way, and the sitting fire commissioners at this time felt that, you know, they could cover it with Double Creek.
Commissioner Cox? Can I get a consensus that we move to action tonight?
Yes.
You do that, please, Amber. Remind me. 'Cause I'll forget. Thank you. Now, we have insurance renewal with the NCACC, and Glenn, the approval will be up. How you doing, Glenn?
I'm good, how are y'all?
Good.
Um, in your agenda packet, there was a memo that gave our insurance rates for this upcoming year. Like everything else, we've discussed inflation, they went up. The general liability property, it went up somewhere around seventeen, almost eighteen percent, which is kind of, by what I've looked at and done some research, I think that's kind of, I hate to say the normal, but it seems to be the normal. It's not excessive. And then, our workers' comp, it went up two point nine percent, so it didn't raise a lot, which is good. Amber did include these numbers in your budget packets, because we had those for her to be able to put those in there. So I'm just asking for us to renew with the NCACC. We do like working with them on different projects. They do offer us rebates on certain things with our auto liability. We, they do give us, it's, it used to be a set number, like three bumpers, now it's a mount. So we get like fifteen hundred dollars back for the bumper guards that we put on the sheriff's department's cars. They're actually doing a vest program, so we get some funding back on the bulletproof vests that we buy. And then, there's other things that, joining them access for workers' comp, and we do some of the safety protocols through, for the general liability and auto. So those all are included in our fees, they don't, there's no extra charge for those.
Just a, a quick thing is, so on that, that increase for workers' comp, is that, is that anything that, that we've done? In other words, because I know sometimes if you don't file the proper forms where it's timely, you get, you get dinged. If there's an excessive amount of workers' comp, where, where, where there's things that, that should be implemented, that have not been implemented?
No, no, it was just, it was just the norm, I hate to say normal, but the normal increase just through, no, it wasn't anything that, that we have done or claims. It's kind of like with our auto, we haven't had any, a lot of excessive auto claims knocked on with this year. We've, we've been very fortunate, they've done really well. And then, they do a workers' comp audit for us. It's usually like a year behind, but, you know, we try to keep that, that's one thing. As the salaries increase, and as, you know, longevity, things to that nature, the workers' comp does go up, because that's what your rates are based on, is, is the salaries. So, and, but there's nothing that, that we did to cause that to go up, no, sir.
Any other questions?
I have a board meeting with them Thursday, if you guys want me to take any messages to them.
Bring the rates down.
They're doing their best, believe me.
Commissioner Cox?
I don't have any questions.
Now, the auto was eighteen percent increase, right? And everything's a go for courthouse bid?
Yes.
All right.
Wednesday.
I seen some addendums floating across my computer.
But everything's still go. There was just some questions some guys had, so. If we can move this to action, that'll be great. I need to get the signed paperwork back to the NCACC.
Get consensus for that, to move to action?
Yes.
On Amber, let's put this, thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Next is Eric Nance, our planning director, proposed zoning ordinance amendment, accessory dwellings. How you doing, Eric?
So what I have pertaining to the accessory dwellings, you'd asked me to speak with Richard Brim, as well as Brandon in register deeds, to make sure that these, that this ordinance would affect register deeds, as, as well as the tax office in any way. And of course, their response was that they didn't see any reason why it would, basically, which you can, you can read on your handout. And also, I pulled the accessory dwelling ordinance that I'm familiar with and worked with for years in the city of Sanford, and of course, they have a new pending ordinance, which is very similar to the one that I've drafted as well. Basically, what my ordinance would do is allow a homeowner to add a second dwelling to their property with a minimum of an acre. If it's a, if the accessory dwelling happens to be a mobile home, they would have to have a minimum of two acres.
What if somebody wanted to take a five-acre tract and build two houses on it, like a mother-in-law, and like, you know, a family and then a mother-in-law, but?
Like vacant land?
Yeah. Like there's nothing on it right now.
Right, one will be the primary, and then the other would be the accessory.
So would the, one that's the accessory could not be any bigger than fifteen hundred square feet?
That's correct, according to this ordinance I'm drafting.
I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that. And if it were something that were bigger than fifteen hundred square feet, if they say we want to build two houses on one five-acre tract, then that would not be considered an accessory dwelling? If it was larger than fifteen hundred square feet? Or how would that work?
Well, it's, whenever they come in for the application process, we would take a look at what they're proposing as the accessory dwelling, and take a look at the ordinance, and of course, it couldn't be over fifteen hundred square feet.
Well, it seems like that's reasonable. I'm not saying it's not, I'm just asking for clarification.
Absolutely.
I just won, I'm just wondering, Eric, fifteen hundred square foot, Commissioner Cox was asking about, and as I read over the ordinance that you sent out, is the rationale for the secondary, what's the rationale for the secondary dwelling not being larger than fifteen hundred square feet?
Basically, so that it doesn't overshadow the principal dwelling, basically. The, the main dwelling being the primary dwelling.
The main dwelling would be five thousand square feet. And the secondary dwelling then was only two thousand square foot, which it couldn't be in this case, because fifteen hundred worth there is. Now, how far can they? Two thousand wouldn't overshadow the five thousand.
Your true statement, absolutely.
I'm just asking.
So I, I totally understand what you're saying.
First, then, I feel the main dwelling may want a very large home, and then they want a secondary home, and the first one is five thousand, and the second one, they wanted it to be two thousand, but they wouldn't be able to do that, because it'd just be able to go to fifteen hundred. I was just wondering if it was, was it your saying, so what?
So that it doesn't overshadow the principal dwelling, yeah?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any issues with the septic, or how all the septic and well setbacks and all that stuff work with doing accessory units like this?
There wouldn't be, as long as they had the room to do it. So through the process, it would be determined whether they'd be able to have the septic through environmental health.
To have a separate septic?
Yes, sir.
Separate septic and septic, uh, separate well?
Uh, separate well, separate repair area.
Oh, okay. So you'd have these two dwellings sitting right beside of each other, with two wells sitting beside of each other?
I'd have to take a look at the environmental health rules. If they state that they could run off that same well, then certainly I would be happy with that.
Okay. I don't think I have anything else. I wouldn't mind having to get some feedback on this after we do it for a while, to see if it's working or not. Been a year, something like that. Update.
So I did see the email correspondence from Richard Brim and Brandon, that said they didn't see anything problematic with it.
That's correct.
Do you need that moved to action tonight?
Yes, sir, if we could.
Consensus to do that? Got it to this, Amber? Thank you. Next up is resolution to conduct an advisory referendum on levying a one-quarter Santee local sales and use tax. I know that I watered up our last regular meeting, I know it was in the afternoon, so I'm trying to refresh some of the comments. I know you said that typically, we don't, we do the stuff like this, where we're trying to put a referendum on the ballot, or something major, we do it at an evening.
Yeah, an evening meeting, make sure everybody has an opportunity to, to comment. And I think Commissioner Menon Hall made a comment that it's kind of conflicting, we're asking for a sales, for the sales tax increase, but then we're also doing a property tax increase.
I did.
Recommended, yeah.
Yeah, I'll come up with that.
So is there?
I guess my, I think my comment was, write to that. And, you know, you don't ever know what, how one of these is gonna go, they say, but the comments that I've read, it always says, put this, put the, something of this nature on your, on the voting election ballot, where you'll have the most highest turnout. This year is the presidential election, and it should be an extremely high turnout for that election versus the primary that we just had. So the comment I made about the, with Mr. Brim on the twenty twenty-five reevaluation was what I was just saying. Okay, we got the twenty twenty-five revow coming up. But, hey, you know, they did an article in the paper on that, I read it, I thought Terry did a good job of explaining it. Everybody else read it, but she did a good job of explaining exactly, and said that maybe some people, because this is my third time on this one. You know, it hasn't passed in the past, but it got, it was much closer. The last time, I think it was fifty-nine percent against, just what the paper said. She had the stats, it was on the front page. And, but, if, you know, I am, if everybody else on this board is good with putting this on the ballot, I'm good with it.
How do you call me?
I'm good with putting it on the ballot. However, unless you get that core group of people to support it, and to get the word out, and to raise some money to publicize it, it probably is not gonna pass again. But, you know, that's what we've been harping on for, since the last time it didn't pass, is, is that has to happen. A private group has to ta, be tasked with promoting it, because we can't use any county money to promote it. It has to be promoted, yard signs with mailers, and that, all that money has to be private. So that needs to happen sooner than late, I mean, we're behind the eight ball with it now, but, but I'm fine with putting it on there.
What's, I, I agree, but what's, if it goes, it gets defeated, what is, ain't there a period waiting for you to?
No, I don't think so.
I think it's a long shot.
Another thought I have, you know, it kinda goes back to the earlier discussions we've had, the, we're gonna determine a certain level of expenditures we have to do. We're gonna fund it with tax money, because that's how we fund things in the local government. Every dollar that we don't get out of sales tax, other than a few minor exceptions, is gonna come from property tax. The more sales tax we can take in, the less property tax we have to spend.
That needs to be conveyed through the taxpayers.
Yeah. So if property tax is your area of concern, which it is about a hundred percent around here, I think, then people need to realize that we've gotta get it somewhere, and it sure be better if it was people, maybe some folks outside the county helping us fund all this stuff, instead of everything coming from our internal property owners. instead of everything coming from our internal property owners. So that's my reason for supporting that.
Yeah, just to, you know, to expand on that is just, I mean, just tourism that's at Hanging Rock, nine, almost nine hundred thousand people coming through. And, you know, whether they stop in King on the way to or going away from Hanging Rock or they come into Danbury, you know, and, and spend money, that's money that, that helps fund the rescues that our fire departments have to do. Like Danbury has gotta go to Hanging Rock. And, you know, our, our EMS going up there, nine times out of ten, it's not a local person that, that's paying property taxes and lives here. It's somebody from out of, out of the county or, or out of the state. And I just think it would, it would just, it would just help because, folks, it's not the, our service level is still gonna continue to grow. It, I, it's just gonna continue to grow. And when it grows, it, we got, you know, more calls for service, more ambulances, more sheriff deputies, and we gotta be able to retain them. Right now, we're having a hard time retaining and hiring sheriff deputies, detention officers, paramedics. So, um, if you can pass the word on to, we'll, we'll try to get it on communities and get some people to start moving on officially. But please pass the word on if you support the, the sales tax thing, please. Tell people need to vote for that in this up, upcoming election.
So we just need to go to action now?
Yes.
We move everything next?
I think we are.
Yeah, we had it on the last time, so if appropriate, I think to move.
Yeah. Um, next up is the draft resolution calling for an alcoholic beverage election in Stokes County. I brought that up, too. And the, the reasoning is, you know, we have it in King, we have it in Walnut Cove. I know Commissioner Cox had brought up even the wedding venues, you know, with, with.
Yeah, I've been asked by a few of them.
I've been asked about places on the northern side. They, they ended up, you know, they feel like it's a disadvantage to just go into, go into Virginia and take their business there. So I, I think, you know, put it on the referendum and take a vote and, um, hopefully it will, it will pass. So that all businesses in Stokes County will operate on the same, same sheet of music, same level playing field. And I just wanna, you know, I mean, it's, people has, people have to have responsibility, of course, when it comes to drinking and driving. It's just the same thing with alcohol. If you drink beer, you know, you're accountable and as well as the business. If you're a bartender, you know, you're held to a degree of, you don't sell people, sell to drunk people or you don't get them to drunk, be drunk and be impaired. So hopefully that, you know, we can, we can get this passed. And so all, all businesses in Stokes County will be able to at least have, that's one more tool they have to survive in the county. We have a consensus to, to put it on the referendum or, or Keith, I think you had an opposing.
Well, I, I think the, it's a decision the people ought to make, it ain't what I think.
Well, one's your opinion.
Well, my opinion, I, I think the wedding vineyards, uh, are going to find a way to serve alcohol no matter what we do, so I, I think we'll help them out by putting it on, on the ballot. Yes, I'm all about freedom of speech.
Commissioner Mendenhall?
Yes, I mean, I'll just be honest with you. You know, I've thought about this basically since we talked about it at the last meeting. The way I looked at it, driving over it this afternoon was, okay, I'm going to go along with the group because I knew everybody was going to support placing the quarter cent sales tax on the ballot. So if we're going to, we're going to place the quarter cent sales tax on the ballot and allow our citizens of Stokes County, who we work for, let them make that decision by voting, then I feel like we should do the same thing on this. Is that if we are going to allow them to put the one-quarter cent sales tax on the ballot and let them vote yea or nay, then let's put the alcohol, average is on the ballot and let the citizens make the decision. So I, so I'd say go ahead and put it on action.
So, so we got a consensus, Amber, if you'll just put it on action and that, that's it?
One comment on that, the ABC board needs to be involved in that. Amber and I were talking about that, uh, Brian Boo mentioned it to me, so. Might wanna invite him up here to go through something, go through it with us, Amber.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I will, I'll get up with him, I thought it was covered today, but must be a miscommunication.
Maybe just get him to, to come and explain to us how, well, how their involvement works with it or what, how they need to be involved in the process to make sure we don't miss anything.
Okay, I can do that.
All right, so next up is the action agenda and we didn't have anything on the action agenda until tonight.
We got lots of stuff.
We have tonight. So go ahead, start out number one, I forgot already.
Mapping for the fire district change.
Make a motion to approve, uh, Mr. Aaron's request on the mapping, uh, situation with the Pilot Knob, Pilot Knob, uh, Five Mile radius, is that correct?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Um, the insurance renewal with the NCA-CC.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The proposed zoning ordinance amendment, uh, for access, accessory dwellings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The resolution to conduct the referendum on levying a one-quarter cent local sales and use tax.
Well, I'll go ahead, hey, I'll go in second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then the resolution calling for an alcoholic beverage election in Stokes County.
I should approve. I can get a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. If there is no further discussion or information, I will entertain a motion.
And I'll make that motion that we adjourn.
Aye. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?